Welcome to the Monday, July 2nd, 2012 City Council Meeting for Shakopee. I call the meeting order at seven o'clock. Kim, would you please take the role, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Mr. McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, we propose to add one which would be a discussion of rescheduling the August 2nd workshop that was previously adopted for budget. And that would be 10 F1 if you'd want to do that.
All right. Anything else? Counselor Clay?
We'll approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Second by Counselor Whiting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Item number four, consent in business. Any items we'd have removed consent? All right.
Should get a motion in a second.
Yeah. I didn't know if you had any that you'd...
Oh, no, I don't, sorry.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Counselor Lehman?
Second.
Second by Counselor Whiting. Would you please read the consent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 4B1 approves a joint powers agreement for right-of-way acquisition of Scott County for the County Road 17 and Valleyview Road projects. 4B2 approves a quote for the televising and sanitary sewer systems with Pipe Services Corporation in the amount of $54,464.70. 4B3 adopts Resolution 7211 requesting funding from MnDOT through the municipal agreement program for railing drive extension from County Road 69 to Taylor Street. 4C1 authorizes hiring of Amberly Cortez as police records technician at Step D, grade III of the non-union pay plan subject to successful completion of pre-employment screening and testing. 4C2 approves Resolution Number 7202, an amendment to the firefighter personnel handbook. 4D1 approves Resolution 7212 regarding revisions to the non-employee instruction policy. 4E1 approves five vehicles held by the Shakopee Police Department to be surplus property and authorizes proper disposal. 4F1 authorizes payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $931,188.21. 4F2 approves amendments to the city council meetings of June 5th and June 19th, 2012. And 4F3 approves not waiving the monetary limitations on the city's tort liability for the upcoming property and liability insurance renewal, period.
Do we have any discussion on those items? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. No one here tonight to speak. Moving on to 10B1, residential sewer availability, charge credit policy. Mr. Looney?
Thank you, Mayor. Member of the council, and Julie Lilahan is also on the memo here, so we again looked at this as a tag team. And we, because of the light agenda tonight and item for discussion, we thought we'd put this back on there and see if we could get some further input from city council. As you know, previously, we did adopt a SAC credit policy that was geared towards commercial and industrial properties. And there was a financial, basically a financial incentive, but in the idea of creating financial tax-based jobs in return for providing those SAC credit units. We have about, oh, I think it was around 500 that we've considered were excess that we could utilize in that program from the 1,494 that we got when RAR Malting came offline. So, you asked us afterwards to look at a residential SAC credit policy, and I took a stab at it to look at what areas would we like to look at? What would be the basis or rationale for providing a SAC credit? Is it financial? Is it environmental? What would that actually be? Put on the camera here, this first map. This is the records we get from Scott County. And just to look at, these are areas where there's existing ISTS systems in what we call the existing municipal urban service area. And some of these will be going away perhaps, depending upon if property develops, such as this area that's on Marshall Road here. There's a plat that's in there now. There's a couple of buildings there that'll be going away. The Zoski piece in the east side of Shakopee, they'd be going away. But we have some existing septic systems. There's sewer along 16. There's some here and there sporadic. These, we have assessment agreements along Valleyview Road so that we don't require people to hook up until they're needed to hook up or when they want to hook up. So there's 29, roughly 29 individual sewage treatment systems or ISTS as I would call them. So that's just one area to look at. Do we want to provide an incentive for people to hook up there? Essentially, if their system goes out and sewer is available, they're supposed to hook up, or they have to fix their system or go on a holding tank. So if their system is proved to be defective. The other area, there are 79 total ISTS systems around what we would call environmental features in the city, O'Dowd Lake and Dean's Lake. And those areas do not have sanitary sewer extended to them yet, but just to look at this issue, you know, as a possibility, do we want to reserve some SAC credit units for an incentive for people to hook up in those areas when sewer is available? So as we looked at this policy, we kind of drafted it in a way to look at those areas, but also wanted to get some council feedback. What were you thinking? What are some of the ideas you'd like to see from a staff level? Like I say, when a system goes out, it's the property owner's responsibility to correct it, to go on a holding tank, correct their situation, go into another ISTS system, or connect to sanitary sewer. That's what they would have to do. Once they're found their system has failed, they have to, they would have to do that. So we're, we have about 750 ISTS systems in the city. That's more units than we would have available, because each residential unit usually is one SAC unit. I don't believe, Michael, we have more than one SAC for residential property. So with that, we put together a policy. That was the rationale behind it. And again, the only basis that staff could come up with would be for some environmental reasons. But I guess we're here to take some council feedback. Where do you want to go with this?
All right. Counselor Lehman?
Bruce, what's your opinion on like O'Dowds and Dean Lake between, I'm sure at some point some are going to fail and they're not going to have the opportunity to hook up to city services because they're not there. Probably won't be there anytime soon. So their option really is to replace it with a mound system, which then they're going to want to keep for a period of time. So are we looking like 20, 30 years down the road, or?
You know, O'Dowd is definitely way out there.
Yep.
That's quite a ways out there. The Dean Lake area, there is sewer from the Dean Lake development. It's pretty close. So it's a possibility of extending sewer there does exist. So I would say that's closer to, you know, 5, 10, 15, 20. And again, it, once things start failing, if somebody had a failed system, but if we say sewer is inimit, the county will give that person five years before they have to do something. And with the hope that sanitary sewer is going to come in. That's a, that's the idea. If you have somebody replace their system that just went out, and then we have sewer come in a year later, not only do they have the cost of replacing the system and sewer, that's kind of a double hit.
Would they be able to keep their existing system and then hook in 15 years later when their new system gets older?
Well, if we, if we put a sanitary sewer system in, let's say we extend sewer to this area, our city code right now is they have three years to hook up unless we do an agreement or modify policy. But that's what's in the ordinance right now. They would have three years.
Counselor Whiting?
You said three years. Of the 29 that are within reasonable distance to the sewers, city code says it's three years. How long has it been for some of these sites?
Well, some of these along Eagle Creek Boulevard here, it's been about 15 years. We just have not, they were there and we never really had a good enforcement mechanism in the early years that I started here. For instance, with the Beckridge Estates, there's 34 units there, all of them been hooked up within the three-year timeframe.
They all did.
Yeah. But I made an effort, I made an effort to go and get those houses to comply.
Do we need city council direction to try and enforce that? Would that be how it would work? Or would that be a little delicate?
That's always, that's always helpful.
Are they grandfathered in? Is that why they're not?
No. We just have not pushed the issue. Some of these are really big lots, they're set way back. We figured, okay, their septic's going to go out, then they'll come and hook up, but that has not happened.
Are we speaking specifically, Mayor, about the properties along 16?
Yeah. The old 16. It's now our, it's now ours. Yeah, it's in here. There's sewer available for some of these units in this area.
And they should have connected already, but we just haven't enforced it?
Just haven't enforced it. We'd have to double-check in there and then say, you know, go back and talk to, it's time to hook up.
Counselor Whiting?
I'm just curious about this one in the middle of what I call Oldertown.
Yeah. Right here? I don't know if that, I mean, again, we get this from the county, and sometimes I never really checked each one to see if it's really there yet. We did have one here on First Avenue that that got taken out with the County Road 69 project. That has been abandoned. There is a couple, I don't know if these exist anymore. I don't think they do. There's one on, if you remember right, on Second Avenue in Shumway. We allowed a resident to put in an ISTS system back in. So there are a few, but there's not that many. The majority of ones that have not hooked up would be along Eagle Creek Boulevard. These are probably under an agreement, or, you know, their beta seat is one big parcel, although sewer might get extended because of the 17 project. These all have special circumstances. This will probably go away with a development of this parcel. Healdale Drive is not in the Musil area, and that, they're all on septic. There's a lot of places, you know, Horizon Drive, Norton Drive. We have a lot of septic systems in the city, but many of them are quite a ways out. Healdale Drive would be next to a future development, and we're going to bring sewer and water up to their doorsteps if that development goes through. And we're, I guess we're working on it again. They've come back in now. That plat is picking up speed again. So the question for staff here in the residential, it's kind of hard to say, what's the financial benefit? If somebody, I mean, everybody in town, if you've had to hook up, you've had to pay a SAC. That's just the way it's been. Everybody pays one SAC for residential property. If there's some overriding concern for environmental reasons or some other reason, that's for the basis of providing a SAC credit. If you would recall, our initial policy said residential property does not qualify.
Is there, Counselor Lehman?
My, my main concern is that somebody puts in a new system and then is forced, I mean, they spend the money on a new system, and then they're forced within a year or two to not use what they invested in and are forced into the city's system. So somehow I'd want to find out how we balance that.
More than likely, if we had a situation like that, you're talking about an assessment that we might have a hard time proving benefit, and usually you have to give some kind of salvage value to the existing system. So you, you would, in those type of situations, I mean, anytime you put sewer and water into an existing area, okay, somebody just put a system in. That's just, that's just a fact of life. That person would probably have, what's my real benefit now that I have a system that would last another 25 years? There would have to be some evaluation of salvage value.
Well, I think it goes one step further than that. In order to put that new system in, they had to get an okay from the county with the city signing off, and then turn around and say, you, everybody said I could do this, I did this, and now you're telling me I have to do something different. So I want to get away from that, because it looks like government's very inconsistent. So somehow, somehow we have to deal with that piece.
But does that fall into this at all?
It does around the Dean Lake area and the O'Dowd's Lake area. Not so much, not so much the one here.
Right. They're putting sewer out to places, but the actual SAC credit policy, that doesn't really affect that at all, right?
It would around O'Dowds and Dean Lake, because if it's available, especially Dean Lake, if it's, if it's available, and they're weighing, my system failed, it's going to be five years, do I, see if the city will extend it now? If the city offers them a credit, a SAC credit, they still might have to pay a portion of the cost to extend it. It might be a balancing act for them to consider, because once it's there, I mean, they're done. They don't have to worry about 20 years later to redo it or whatever.
Counselor Whiting?
I, I'm opposed to this policy for residential use. Basically, what we're saying is that we have, well, we have 500 SAC credits that we can utilize for our, for our entire credit policy. And to me, when we talked about this, I thought it was economic development, not a benefit to residents. And Counselor Lehman kind of alluded to it that, you know, or we talked a little bit about, but if you give one person a credit, and then last year somebody hooked up and didn't get that credit, well, then you're kind of going down a slippery slope here. To me, these 500 credits, and you mentioned that one SAC credit would be for one house. When you have a big development project for a business, or it's more than one credit, it's probably closer to 100, I would guess, in some cases. So you, you have a potential of using up these 500 pretty quickly if you get some major businesses in here. To me, we're basically looking at 29 sites for this credit policy, in my mind, because that's where, who would be available to hook up right now. And to me, that, that's not a good use of this, these credits.
All right. Other comments? Counselor Clay?
I disagree.
And please tell us why.
Yeah, I'll tell you why. There's, you know, 29 is not a large number when you look at all the SAC credits we have to deal with. And my, my concern primarily is with the water quality of the city's wells. I think all, or all but one of our current wells supplying all the city water are lying within the lower elevations of the, of the city. 7,000, 8,000 years ago, when the glaciers melted, the Warren River rushed through here and basically just washed away 60, 70 feet of soil that, you know, carved out this larger valley. We have a primary bluff line or shoreline, I guess you'd call it, that runs up to about Shakopee Avenue, 10th Avenue. Then it flattens out for a while, and you have the secondary bluffs, which are quite prominent as you look to the south. Easy to spot, you know, all of a sudden they rise up, you know, the Marshall Hill up to the top there. But all of our city wells are down in the, in the lower section. The problem with that is that with all that top soil that was washed away by the Warren River, we don't have a great filtration system existing anymore for the effluent from the sanitary sewers as well as our sanitary, or stormwater drainage systems as well. You go down just a few feet in a lot of spots in this lower level, and right away you hit lime rock, and you think, well, rock, that's going to be fairly solid, and, but actually it's, it's one of the most porous kinds of material, and water just flows through it much more quickly than it would through, you know, a nice soil substrate layer. So my, my concern is that we need to try to get rid of, or entice people to abandon their sanitary sewer systems in this lower area. And I think almost all of these dots on the map that's showing right now are within the lower, the lower range.
Right in here.
Yeah.
I don't think these are here.
Yeah, I'd have to see a topographic overlay to be sure, but, you know, I, I think it's important for the, for the protection of our water supply to try to get rid of as many of those as, as we can, as quickly as we can. The ones, I'm surprised, I didn't know that the ones that are still existing along Eagle Creek Boulevard are, were supposed to have been converted over by now. I'm sorry that we passed on an opportunity to enforce that.
Have we though? Have we passed the opportunity to enforce it?
Well, we, we passed it by, previous to this evidently, since we haven't...
But we can do it now though, right? Ish?
Certainly the code is still there.
Yeah, it depends on how many people you want with very stern faces staring you down at, you know, a future council meeting. You know, we could, for, for people in that situation, we could say, you know, you've got five years to convert and connect to the city sewer system. If you do it the first year, you get 100% of a SAC credit. The second year, it's minus 20%, third year minus 40%. In five years, we'll make you connect and you won't get any credit. Now, some sort of an incentive plan like that, I think, would kind of get people moving in the right direction sooner without necessarily filling up our room here with, with people.
So why would we do that when all the other people who live between them went on the sewer system on their own without getting any...
I'm hoping that that was 20 years ago and they'll forget.
Ah, so we'll fill them up with those people instead of the other ones?
Yeah, but you'll have to deal with that.
Thank you so much. Counselor...
Just a couple of items for thought, and Bruce can address them more specifically. He mentioned the property last year that was in front of the city council, and I think it's fair to say that the cost of hooking up to the property that had the septic system issue was far more than the cost of a SAC credit. And keep in mind that the SAC credit cost is relatively small. At the same time they have to hook up, they'll have to hook up to the public water system. And the water credit is much larger than the regional SAC credit for a housing unit. So I'm not sure how much incentive 2365 is going to be for some of those properties against the cost of actually hooking up to sewer and water. I did want to mention too, the Dean Lakes area, because when that PUD was under consideration, a large part of the discussion in the meetings with the residents on County Road 16 around Dean Lakes was about finding a way through this project to extend sewer and water to them. And they made it pretty clear, I think, that it was their choice not to have that accommodation made. So the difficulty was, I think, for the city council, do you require the developer to do something that the property owners were not interested in doing? And here we are now, about nine years out from that approval, with those folks still on septic systems. So the cost is much more than just that SAC credit. I'm not sure how much of an incentive that actually would be.
I'd agree with Michael. The cost of the sewer credit is really not that great in comparison to some of the other thing. The other thing I'd want to point out, if you were somebody who lived next to the house that didn't hook up, and you did hook up and pay, how would you feel? I don't think that's a fair scenario.
Yeah, but it's only $2,300. How mad are they going to get over that?
You, you will be surprised.
If I may borrow a theme here.
Yeah, you know what they'll do. They'll be right in here. It's a no-win situation. You're going to make somebody mad.
Counselor Lehman?
And I think the other problem that Bruce brought up earlier is, if you find out that it's going to cost $40,000 to extend water and sewer to one of these properties, they already have water, they already have sewer, and now they're going to...
$2,300 is nothing.
Now, now they're going to take the position that there is no benefit, already have these things, and now we're going to spend it in court, proving that we're giving them a benefit, or they're going to prove that we did not give them a benefit, which we might end up paying the whole cost, it's our, a large portion of the cost. So it almost has to be on a case-by-case where you really have to have all the details of where the situation is.
Counselor Whiting?
But doesn't by ordinance saying that they had three years within the realm of having that sewer go by their house, hook up, and now that we've, don't we need to enforce that just to keep it black and white?
I think the benefit analysis statute is beyond, above the city level. I think that's a state statute.
Say that again?
I think the benefit analysis argument is above the city level.
Right, exactly. But I think what Counselor Whiting is saying is that they should be on the sewer already, and they're not, so we say, sorry, you have to go on the sewer to protect our environment. Are we willing to make that call right now?
But if it's going to cost them 40 grand, they can make the benefit analysis case and say, I already have these things, I'm not polluting, and you want me to pay $50,000 for something I already have?
Right.
Where's the benefit?
Mayor? I think I can add some clarity to this, but for instance, along Eagle Creek Boulevard, that sewer and water's been assessed. Those property owners have paid in an assessment. They're, they're not going to get the $40,000. It's, the pipes are there. I believe we would just have to do a follow-up on those properties. And with some... I believe we would just have to do a follow-up on those properties. And it's something we should do. Let them know, okay, you've had some time.
So we could argue that you already paid the assessment, now you should benefit from it.
Right.
Right.
I would also argue that, and I know I was joking about filling up the room with angry people.
Kinda joking.
Kind, kind of joking, but the, the one thing I've learned in a number of years on the city council is that eventually if you do it long enough and do it correctly, you're gonna get everybody mad at you. So just might as well, you know, do it in bigger bunches and get it over with quicker.
So are you making the argument against using SAC credits now?
No, no, I'm just saying, making the argument that, you know, we probably shouldn't worry about how many people are gonna get mad at us and just concentrate on what's best for the environment and the long-term safety and well-being of the city, of the city's water supply.
Got it. Councilman Sherman?
So, um, I agree with Councilor Lehman that I don't believe the SAC credits are, would be best used for residential, so I do agree with that part. Um, in terms of revisiting some of these properties, you know, we have the ability to potentially reset the clock and assess and the situation individually and decide then how much time they do have to hook up. So that might be a way to approach it, since we've kinda missed that three-year window that was out there previously, to just go back and say, okay, so we missed it, let's create a new window that would be appropriate, um, timing.
Yeah, each property here, the, the, they're fairly large lots. Different situation, but we can address each one. And I would like to go back into the records and actually really see if these things exist here. I don't think they do, but we'd like to go back and visit that. These do exist. These do exist, I know. And go back and look at whether or not the sewer is available to them or not. Is there something, why it isn't available? But I think it is available. If there is available, we would send a notice out. That's what I would propose.
Councilman Sherman?
And then I would think that the age of their system would somehow come into play in terms of how aged that system is and the likelihood of failure at whatever year, if it's twenty years, if it's twenty-five years, and what consideration that would be given. And I guess that's with that benefit analysis.
So figure out a way to get them on somehow.
Right, like how much money have they spent on that system and when and what has, um, what value have they gotten out of it? It's essentially like a depreciation too. Where are they at in terms of being able to connect and, um, having realized the value of that system?
Ms. McNeil?
Uh, this council, if you want this information, do you want us to concentrate on those that have sewer in ready proximity? I mean, we can look at O'Dowd Lake all we want, but the reality is, it's not gonna happen. Um, and Councilor Clay, is there any merit, do you want us to limit it just to the area that's in the bottom of the River Warren as opposed to the first level? Which would be the Dean Lake, uh, area?
I, I think both the bottom and, and the secondary, everything lower than the, uh, secondary bluff.
Lower, so basically, lower than Marshall?
There's a, the wellhead protection plan that the SPUC has, has a delineated area of its major concern for susceptibility of, of, um, well contamination. We could use that as a guide. Did I get you a copy? I'll have to do that.
All right, so I'm hearing up here that we are not necessarily in favor of using the SAC credits for, um, residential? We have, Councilor Lehman is that, Councilor Clay is against, is for using SAC credits for residential?
In the lower.
In the lower?
Yeah, the, the parts where the.
Councilman Lehman?
I am, if it's to for the right reasons, not just carte blanche.
Okay, Councilman Sherman?
I would not wanna use the SAC credits that way.
All right, I am in the same camp as that, but I do agree with Councilor Clay that we should get them off of, um, whatever, uh, ISTS, the septic systems. I think it's really important that we, if, if we have the mechanisms to get that done, we should do that. How, how best do we approach that?
Well, I think council member Sherman had a good idea. Set the clock, send a notice out. There's not that many parcels. We certainly can meet with them one-on-one and, um, see what there's, if they have an objection or not, report back. But I think we're talking about seven, maybe eight parcels.
All right. Councilman Clay, what do you think about that?
Yeah, well, if, that's what you can agree with, I'll go with that.
Councilman Lehman?
My concern is setting that clock to three years and then three years go by and we forgot to address it again. So. Uh, maybe, uh, maybe one year, and then depending on the case-by-case situation, maybe there's a hardship or something that could be looked at.
Ms. Loney, can you come back to us first meeting next month with the plan, and then we'll talk about that plan?
I think I can do that.
Just so that we get clarification on this, basically, we're gonna concentrate on the seven or eight that have ready access to pipe now. We'll determine a, an appropriate length of time for you to decide whether it's one year or three years and how to get that clock going, but then individually contact those property owners and let them know that we're really serious this time.
I, I, I think we're talking about everybody who should be on sep, who should be on city sewer.
That has the pipe available.
Right, so that's more than just the seven, is that the twenty?
The twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Well, most of these here have a separate agreement that we did when we did the Valley B Road project.
Okay.
We cannot, there's no timeline. That was part of the agreement to get that project done.
All right.
Uh, many of these others might go away just because of development.
Right.
I think the ones, I, I don't know if these, I think this one actually did go away. I don't know if these exist yet, and then these are still there. Uh, the, some of these ones are gonna be taken out with development and we'll have to do some further research and bring that back.
Perfect.
So we can, the, the amount of properties out there that need, that can hook up right now is not that many.
Okay. Councilman Lehman?
See, I thought Councilor Sherman's direction, which I agree with, was, uh, to take a look at each individual property, A, see if, if, if it's accessible to begin with. B, find out if their system is a brand-new, state-of-the-art system that's less than three weeks old, then obviously you're gonna probably wanna let them use it for a little while, and more than a year, I would assume, since it's built for twenty. Um, and you can't prove a benefit at that point. And you're gonna waste a lot of money in the process. So I think it would be better just, as Councilor Sherman said, is just have staff look at case-by-case and bring back their expert recommendation, because maybe not a Marnoo. If, if that's the case, then it's a pretty easy deal.
Yeah, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Okay.
Yep. Or is, do we have clarity with that? They're gonna bring back a plan in first meeting next month as to what we, how we handle them with, how Ms. Loney thinks the best way to do it is, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, we'll get, we'll come up with an identified map. We'll double-check everything and bring it back.
Thank you, sir.
One last thing before we move on. Do, do we have a, a policy, city policy anywhere about, um, no longer approving any private septic system developments in the city?
Uh, I don't believe we have that. If somebody met the requirements of our current code, I think we would have to allow that to happen. Michael can expound upon that, but I don't, I think we, there is still provision that they can put them in.
Mr. Loney is correct. We have zoning districts, specifically the rural residential and ag pres- preservation district that are specifically intended for, um, development that is not on public sewer and public water. If someone were to come in with a proposal to develop a plat on one of those parcels, uh, we would have to work with them on the design of the sewer and water system and we would probably encourage a community system that hopefully in future years could hook up. But the reality is, we're unlikely to see that kind of, um, application, because some of the properties um, that would be available for that kind of development are on Marshall Road. Some of them are owned by the SMSC. We had one plat a number of years ago, um, that Dave Brown proposed, and it was abandoned because there really wasn't a market for it. And if you drive in my part of Scott County, you can see why. There are a lot of, um, two-to-ten acre, uh, parcels with homes on them that aren't moving very quickly. So there's not a real market demand for that kind of development. But our code would require that we approve a plat that had ISTS if it was in one of those zoning districts.
Is there any interest among the council members of rethinking that?
Yes.
One yes, two yeses?
I'd agree.
Three yeses?
All right, we got three.
Matt's got a maybe nod going.
No, you're taking a bunch of land totally out of the, out of the loop for a long time, and some of it will never be developable if you can't ever get services to it.
Well, we'll discuss it.
Like around O'Dowd's Lake.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, what I heard is ISTS development of, is this more than the single-family platted lots that are currently there? I mean, it's subdivision with, uh, four per forty in it.
I think what Mr. Clay said was.
What was, I?
Okay, just, to no longer allow ISTS development, would that be for new plats?
Yeah.
Okay, so single-family, I mean, I think they still have the legal right to develop those if it's a platted lot and meets all the other criteria of the zoning district.
A couple of things about that. Mr., uh, Mr. McNeil is absolutely correct. If it's an existing lot of record, they're gonna have development rights that they're gonna be able to exercise. However, um, the entire southern portion of the city is guided for a single-family density development. So one potential solution that we can discuss is if you want to proactively rezone areas that are still rural residential or ag preservation, rezone them to sewered rural residential, which implies that they can only be platted if they have sewer and water available to them. So we have some options that we could talk about with you.
Thank you. We will discuss. When do you wanna discuss that?
Probably after budget. We'll have, we'll have more, we'll have mad people in the room again, but there'll be fewer of them with deeper pockets.
All right. Uh, ten F1 budget workshop.
Mayor, council, at the last meeting, this was the budget schedule which you adapted in preparation for the, uh, FY thirteen budget. Councilor Lehman astutely noted after, uh, this was adopted, that, uh, the first workshop, August second, is actually the evening of the Taste of Shakopee, which is popular and also very well parked in the downtown area. So the suggestion was that we take a look at rescheduling that meeting. Uh, based on that, we would suggest two days prior to that, Tuesday, July thirty-first is the fifth Tuesday, and might be an appropriate time. Would that be acceptable?
Works for me?
That would work.
I'm gonna be helping my son move into his new townhome that day, so I may be late getting here or fall asleep halfway, halfway through the meeting, but yeah. Well, they always are.
Thank you. All right, any problems? Nope, July thirty-first it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, item eleven, council member reports. Start with Councilor Lehman.
On the twenty-first, I attended the listening tour for the signed ordinance with the chamber and, uh, this is the downtown area. I made, uh, some interesting comments. Same day, I made it out to the Greystone twenty-fifth anniversary. That was well-attended. And then the twenty-second, there was a grand opening for Tires Plus that I attended and was also part of the Outdoor Heritage and Education class, or I don't know what the C stands for, OHC, uh, the youth fishing tournament out at, uh, Lions Park this Saturday. So that was, that was a lot of fun.
Beautiful. Ms. Clay?
Uh, nothing to report. I was too busy thinking of things I could say tonight to make sure I didn't get re-elected.
Okay, then. Councilman Lehman?
Derby Days. It's crunch time for Derby Days and their board and their volunteers and stuff. They're putting the final touches on this year's Bonanza at Huber Park. ShakopeeDerbyDays.com. Still looking for volunteers and donations for the fireworks and, uh, all the other stuff they do down there. Um, been working with the Derby Days folks and staff on some electrical issues that'll be coming to council, uh, seventeenth, I think it is. Is that correct? That's all I have.
All right. Councilman?
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Um, the only thing I've got is last, uh, Thursday, Friday, I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference up in Duluth, and Duluth did an amazing job of getting it, of pulling off the whole thing, considering all the issues that they had. Um, it was pretty incredible. Talked to, uh, Mayor Ness for a little bit, and he was, uh, tired, and it was, uh, very interesting to see how they made the whole thing happen on Wednesday. It was supposed to start on Wednesday, um, and they didn't have any power at all in the conference center, and they pulled it off for Thursday, and it was without a hitch and learned a lot and met a lot of great people. Um, so it was fun, and Julie introduced me to about every single person up there, which was very good and tiring. Uh, I don't know, twelve other business. Anyone have other business for the evening?
Councilman Clay?
Once Duluth has a chance to kinda catch its breath, um, I think it would be interesting, uh, two years ago, three years ago, the city council had a little emergency preparedness sort of training. Um, it might be interesting to touch base with, uh, Duluth, who actually went through that and, and see if there were any things that they learned that we might be able to benefit from and apply here.
Great suggestion. All right, um, I will entertain a motion to recess for closed session and consider the purchase of real property, man dot parcel forty-three. Councilman Lehman?
Motion to go and do closed session for consideration of purchase of real property.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Lehman, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, five to zero?
Take a five-minute break.
Um, and we'll take it. Do we need a motion for that? We're already out. All right, we are in recess for five, with a five-minute break starting at seven forty-five. Sorry.